I would like to call the March 2015 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. First invocation, Dewan Craft.
Mrs. Etheridge had a prior commitment, so she wasn't able to be here. Mine is short and sweet. There is a story they tell of two dogs, both at separate times walk into the same room. One comes out wagging his tail while the other comes out growling. A woman watching this goes into the room to see what could possibly make one dog so happy and the other so mad. To her surprise, she finds a room filled with mirrors. The happy dog found a thousand happy dogs looking back at him, while the angry dogs saw only angry dogs growling back at him. What you see in the world around you is a reflection of who you are.
Thank you. Next, Pledge of Allegiance. Alexandra Carter, student board member, will lead us. Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Father, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and to the faithful, the worthy, and just as for all.
Okay, earlier today, we had a work session, and the items that we covered was instructional time and makeup day discussion, which we will vote on the makeup days later on tonight, school calendar flexibility, 2015-16 capital outlay budget and request, the results of the Knott's Island Middle School survey and request, presentation on E-Rate funding by Paul O'Brien. Next, the Affordable Care Act and how that affects the budget of the school system, senior privileges update by Renee Doughty, high school principal, and the second reading of policy 4201-7271, injury and loss prevention. Next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item one, one district, one books, and sponsors. Ms. Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent.
Good afternoon, Dr. Dobney, members of the board, and Ms. Osmond. This has been a pretty exciting time for us for a lot of reasons, but we've been amidst all of the weather delays, been preparing for a very exciting, family-oriented, school-related event with our one district, one book. Reading aloud at home is very valuable because it better prepares children to be effective readers. But more than it being a fun activity, it is also something that is very worthwhile to help bond with families, with parents and students in their interaction during a shared reading experience. Through our one district, one book program, we aim to build a community of readers, and we mean that literally. Students, parents, teachers, bus drivers, support staff, and now members of our community are going to be participating in reading the book James and the Giant Peach. Over the weekend, Beach 104 was running multiple public service announcements promoting this and getting people ready for it. So again, we want to put a shout out to them for their help in promoting this and how they're going to help us with it as we move along. In schools, students are going to be invited to answer trivia questions that are related to the scheduled reading as we've outlined it. And teachers will be incorporating activities in their classrooms as well. We have multiple joint ventures here. We also have on our menus, our child nutrition director has incorporated some peachy-type food items that will also relate to our reading of James and the Giant Peach. And we will also be working online this year, posting some trivia questions and discussion questions through our district's Facebook page. So we're really excited about this. I believe all of the board members have now received their book, and yay. Your bookmark will outline the reading schedule. It's not a hard read, really, is it? And on the back of each of the bookmarks, we have put down some suggested reading activities for parents, and these were things that we sent home with parents today, as a matter of fact. So through, we want to thank our partners, our partners with Town Bank and now with Currituck Kids to help bring these books into the hands of the families across our district. Today, again, everyone received a copy of the book, and they kicked off with a district-wide presentation of a reading with Ty and Austin Dillon that was filmed by the Simmons family, almost collaboratively, making a trip out to Charlotte. But I believe your daughter Caroline helped to film that, and we've posted that online and shared it with our teachers. So that's how we kicked things off today. We would like to recognize our friends from Currituck Kids, as we did with Town Bank earlier when they presented us with their check. I have Ginger Robinson, our vice chair, from Currituck Kids Fund. She's here this evening on behalf of the organization, and we have a certificate of appreciation, as we've not yet received the final check from them, but we'd like to show our appreciation, knowing the check is in the mail. So I'd like to bring her forward. Ginger has volunteered to read the book to all of the members of the Currituck Kids Board.
I didn't volunteer.
They received copies of the book during our meeting last week, and so we've been spreading the love and the cheer through the community, through various different venues. So we're going to present you with this, but I'm going to ask the board members if you'll come forward so I can get a quick picture with Ms. Robinson. Go ahead. Yeah, I know. I know, it's been a long day, though. We could get you up front here, and we'll get you a quick picture. Yeah, sure.
Sandy told me when I got here, I probably should say something, so totally unprepared, but that don't matter, I've done that all my life. I just want to say that last year, I did read the book. I thought it was absolutely a wonderful idea that all the kids would be reading the same book. One of the things that we talked about in our board meeting when we approved this is this helps set a level playing field for all the kids, when they're all reading the same book, when they can encourage their parents, or the school system encourages their parents to read to them, that's family time. That certainly helps us as Currituck Kids, and our mission, which is we're trying to help kids who need help in any way that they need it, quite frankly. So we're big supporters of this program. I also told Sandy, and I'm going to put a plug in now, that I think next year, the program, the book should focus on math and technology, in keeping with the STEM focus. I personally was a math person, and I spent 32 and a half years in technology, so if we can find something that helps support that, not just literacy, I would encourage that. So, thank you, dear.
Great. We are. Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you, and on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the sponsors, Town Bank, Currituck Kids, and also the NASCAR drivers, Ty and Dillon, Austin, for reading the first chapter of the book, you know, for our kids, to try to stimulate some excitement there for them. Okay, next, student, school board member reports. Katie Trailer and Mary Kate Morgan from Currituck High School, and Alexandra Carter from Naperville College.
Hey, y'all. For Moyoc Middle School, the spring sports starts in March for track, baseball, and softball. We will be having our annual spring book fair from March 17th through March 25th, and the eighth grade band will be performing on March 12th with the eighth grade band students from Moyoc Middle. This joint concert, like I said before, is at 6:30, so it's obviously going to be a great show, so everyone should go. On Wednesday, March 11th, the CCHS hosted, is teaming with the Red Cross for the annual blood drive. So if you haven't signed up, sign up by Wednesday. On Saturday, March 21st, the arts department will be hosting Spring Into the Arts with fun, interactive activities for the whole family, and that starts at 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I know that the chorus is, the high school chorus will be singing there, and I know the middle school choruses will also be doing that, and the arts programs are going to have a ton of little interactive activities. It's going to be a lot of fun, so make sure to come and support that. And to Mary Kate.
Okay, so for Shawboro Elementary School, due to weather, Shawboro Elementary had to reschedule its February 26th PTA dinner and talent show. The new date is March 26th, starting at 5:30. Fourth and fifth grade students will be performing in the talent show. The Student of the Month luncheon for February has also been rescheduled, and it will be tomorrow, March 6th. The March luncheon will be Friday, March 20th. A special thank you to the Arts Council for bringing Donna Washington to our students. Donna lives in Durham and is an author and storyteller. She was at Shawboro on Monday, March 2nd. Students and staff were actively involved in the stories being told. Shawboro will be joining all the other elementary schools, as Ms. Kinzel spoke about, joining the one district, one book reading of James and the Giant Peach. Their kickoff is today at 8:00, and special thanks to Jackie and Mary Simmons for getting, for their part in getting the Dillon brothers to help with the opening. Thank you also to Town Bank of Currituck and Currituck Kids for their donation towards the purchase of the books. Thank you to Sandy Kinzel, Allison Osmond, and the entire central office staff for their assistance. Our book fair will run from March 9th to 13th. Shawboro will sponsor a Family Science Night on March 10th. Thank you to Ms. Janet Rose for making this happen. Our students are excited about the upcoming Math 24 competition on March 11th at Moyoc Elementary School. Students and staff have enjoyed Spirit Week, and all the activities last week surrounded the birthday of Dr. Seuss. Kindergarten Community Helpers' Day is March 19th. The student, or the Spring Fling is on Friday, March 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and Ms. Palmetakis and our chorus will join the chorus from Moyoc Elementary School on March 21st at Spring Into the Arts. They will perform at 11:30. For Moyoc Elementary School, students and staff at Moyoc Elementary are excited about reading. This week, we are celebrating the Read Across America on Monday and honoring Dr. Seuss's birthday with a variety of activities and guest readers. Tuesday, they were excited to host Donna Washington, author and storyteller, thanks to the Albemarle Arts Council. She will be meeting with the students during grade-level assemblies and will also be attending the Authors' Meeting Club at school. And last but not least, we are really looking forward to kicking off the One District, One Book campaign, which we've also spoke about. Teachers and staff have collaborated to plan engaging and memorable activities for the students and families. In addition to these great activities, our PTA will host a family movie night on, or this Friday at 5:30. For Central Elementary School, Central Elementary is celebrating Read Across America in grand style with the activities each day in honor of Dr. Seuss. They dressed in red and wore wacky hats, crazy socks, and dressed in different colors all at once, each activity correlating to a Dr. Seuss book. On Friday, storyteller Donna Washington came there again, and they aired Live in the Gym with guest star the Cat in the Hat. Our Love Your Pets service learning project is also in full swing. Students are bringing in pet items such as food, toys, et cetera, to be donated to the local animal shelter. The event was kicked off with a presentation by the animal shelter staff, and thanks to everyone for their donations.
Good afternoon. It's kind of earlier than normal, but it's still the afternoon. I just realized that. I was about to say morning. So, I have the pleasure of representing Griggs Elementary School and giving thanks to those who came from the Sharon Methodist Church and provided their staff with a yummy lunch on February 13th. And also, Ms. Donna Washington also visited Griggs on March 4th, and they really enjoyed her storytelling. They had their second nine-week PBIS recognition day on February 6th, and students were able to choose from a variety of activities. And they celebrated Read Across America by having all students and teachers reading together in the hallways on March 2nd. Due to inclement weather, Griggs had to reschedule their heart jump-a-thon, and it's now rescheduled for March 13th. They're looking forward to reading James and the Giant Peach in the One District, One Book program, and students are preparing and looking forward to the math. Wait, did you read Griggs already? Because this is like word for word what you just said. Anyways, maybe they're just doing things together. I don't know. So they are also having a Math 24 competition, and a book fair on March 16th through 19th, and they will be hosting a family night on Thursday, March 19th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And they will be able to participate in reading and math activities, and dinner, yum, and a book fair. Jarvisburg Elementary School would like to thank Sharon Methodist Church as well for providing their staff lunch on February 13th, and on Thursday, March 5th, they were able to host Donna Washington as well to conduct workshops throughout the day. They want to thank the Albemarle Arts Council, and they're looking forward to James and the Giant Peach. On March 11th, students will be participating in the Math 24 contest, and then the 31st, the Battle of the Books competition. Knott's Island Elementary School will have a fitness fun night on Friday, March 20th at 6:30 in the gym, and admission is free. The school will also be holding a barbecue fried chicken takeout dinner on Friday, March 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and the event is being catered by Southland Restaurant. Tickets are $8 a plate and can be purchased in advance from the school's main office. In news for JP Napp, JP Napp had their application window from February 2nd to March 2nd, and it's now closed, so interviews will be held at each of the middle schools during the week of March 16th through the 23rd. The incoming freshman class meet and greet will be held on Tuesday, May 5th, from 5:00 to 6:00, which I know is always out, but get excited, kids. So ACT makeup testing will be on Tuesday, March 17th, and on Wednesday, March 18th, three other early colleges will be coming to JP Napp for a peer site review, and the SAG Club is sponsoring the Amore Women's Conference to be held at JP Napp on March 27th from 4:00 to 12:00 midnight. And just one personal note, I thought I would act like the cool adult board members and visit a school this month, so I did. For my 18th birthday, instead of having a party, I'm doing 18 Acts of Kindness in the community, and so one of the acts of kindness was to read to elementary schools, or school students, and so I went to Shawboro and did some reading with them, and forgot how cool books are when they have pictures in them. But I thought that was really fun, and they had a great time, and they just really enjoyed reading for Dr. Seuss Week. I guess it was his birthday, or it is his birthday coming up, and so they were really, really excited, and their classrooms look a lot cooler than ours. No offense to JP Napp, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Katie, Mary Kate, and Alexandra. Next item, field trip requests. Superintendent Osmond.
Good evening. The Currituck County High School Wrestling Regionals were held in Swansboro, excuse me, February 13th and 14th. The high school wrestling team also went to the state championships in Greensboro February 19th through the 21st. CCHS FFA Leadership Mega Conference was held, or will be held, in Greensboro, March 28th and 29th. Moyoc Middle School and JP Napp FBLA State Leadership Conference will be in Greensboro, April 12th through the 15th. And CCHS AP Government Trip is scheduled for Washington, D.C., May 25th through the 27th.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, the revised 2014-15 school calendar. Ms. Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent.
Good afternoon again. Earlier during the work session, I provided you with a rather detailed outline of the proposal that I'm going to present more in a short Reader's Digest version this evening. But we do have a couple of quick slides that I'd like to share, just so that the public's aware of what really constrains us as far as trying to make these days up and making a calendar work for us. So there are some key considerations for the calendar. 185 days or 1,025 hours of instructional time is what the general statute requires. The calendar that was approved by the board when we first created it had 1,069 to 1,083 hours in it, and it varies between the elementary and the high school. Elementary has a few things that are pulled out, like recess and things that are not instructional time in the calculation, so they're at the lower end of that range. JP Napp Early College operates under a waiver, so they are not held to the instructional hours to begin with. It allows us to start earlier than the required dates and allows them to finish at an earlier time, too, so that they can align with the community college which they're partnered with. We include two non-days in the calendar for inclement weather use. After our seventh day of being out of school, I went back to the calendar we've created and approved for next year to see where those non-day fell. Fortunately, the non-day, we at least have one non-day that will fall in March next year that actually may be useful to us in the event of inclement weather next year. Teachers must have 215 days in their contracted calendar year, so when a makeup day or a workday is taken from the calendar, and we say it's close to everybody, then they have to make up that workday in order to fulfill the 215-day contract obligation. New this year is the provision in policy that allows for time that's lost through, whether delayed opening or whether it's an early release, we do not have to make up those hours, just full closures that need to be made up. The proposals I have here on the next two slides, this is for the district as a whole with the exception of the Early College, and then we have one specific to the Early College. The proposal in this slide will allow us to meet the instructional hour requirement without having to make up all eight days that were lost due to inclement weather this year. So following this chart, I'm going to just highlight the date that the closure was, that we had, is in the first column, and then the second column shows what we have for the status for staff and students. In most cases, we closed for students, but not necessarily for staff. If it's an optional workday, then staff who choose not to come in will take annual leave in order to be able to keep that day in the calendar for their 215-day contract. In the center column, you'll see the actual action that we're taking, or proposal that we're making. Again, we do not have to make up every single day that was lost, and so when we looked at the instructional hours, we're proposing that we will convert an early release day, two early release days that are currently in our calendar, to full days, and that will give us additional hours. April 3rd is currently a holiday on our calendar. We have the flexibility to take holidays and place them, as long as we recognize the holiday in their calendar, we can then move that to another location where, if it makes sense. And in this case, it makes sense for us to move that holiday to the beginning of the spring break week, so that we can keep the continuity of the break during that time, make April 3rd a full day for staff and students, so that we can make up one full day there. The April 6th annual leave day will be converted then, or moved to the end of the school year, where staff can choose to take that annual leave, or they can come to work if they choose. We will be extending our school year. January, or June 10th was slated to be our last day, and it's typically a half day. We will now make that a full day and go to school on June 11th, with that being our last day as a half day of school. The implications for 10-month staff is in the final column, and you'll see that we will have to make up one additional workday on June 16th. June 18th will be the annual leave day that will be moved from the spring break calendar, and then another added workday for June 17th. We're keeping that annual leave day at the very end, so that if staff don't want to take it, that they don't have that, they don't have to mix it up there at the end of the school year.
And those days are to make sure they have the 215-
That's correct.
-days that are required by law.
JP Napp Early College was a little bit different in configuring their makeup hours and makeup time. Instructional hours are still important, in spite of the fact that they're an early college and aren't held to the same requirements. So that being said, we've converted a workday in their calendar. On March 13th, we've converted that to a full day. We've also converted that holiday right before spring break, made that a full day as well, and they will have an added workday on June 2nd. The difference with the Early Colleges that these, it was set up as an, it's an high school, an high school, an early college high school. So going into it, the students all have to take online courses at some point in time, so they're all prepared for that. As such, Mr. Bass and I came to us and let us know, after we'd missed the first couple of days, and let us know that he had informed his staff that he was asking them to make time in their day, whether it was at home or wherever they were, while we were closed to students and staff, to have office hours, and to continue to send out assignments through emails, essentially flipping the classroom. And with that being said, they were able to continue with instruction and lessons during many of the closures, so we opted, because of that, we opted to count those days as workdays for their staff and their students, for that matter. So that's why you'll see the online assignments and office hours negated the fact that they would have to make those days and times up. That is all we have for you to consider this evening, and we would request that you take action and approve this, so that we can begin advertising and getting the revised calendars out to staff and parents across the district.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I would just like to comment before taking the vote that I am very happy that our administration considers student safety above everything else-
And those days are to make sure they have the two hundred and fifteen-
That's correct.
-days that are required by law.
JP NAP Early College was a little bit different in configuring their makeup hours and makeup time. Instructional hours are still important in spite of the fact that they're an early college and aren't held to the same requirements. So, that being said, we've converted a workday in their calendar. On March thirteenth, we've converted that to a full day. We've also converted that holiday right before spring break, made that a full day as well. And they will have an added workday on June second. The difference with the Early College is that these, it was set up as an, it's an high school, an high school, an Early College high school. So, going into it, the students all have to take online courses at some point in time, so they're all prepared for that. As such, Mr. Bassnight came to us and let us know after we'd missed the first couple of days, and let us know that he had informed his staff that he was asking them to make time in their day, whether it was at home or wherever they were while we were closed to students and staff, to have office hours, and to continue to send out assignments through emails, essentially flipping the classroom. And with that being said, they were able to continue with instruction and lessons during many of the closures. So, we opted because of that, we opted to count those days as workdays for their staff and their students for that matter. So, that's why you'll see the online assignments and office hours negated the fact that they would have to make those days and times up. That is all we have for you to consider this evening, and we would request that you take action and approve this so that we can begin advertising and getting the revised calendars out to staff and parents across the district.
Do I have a motion for approval?
If they move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? I would just like to comment before taking the vote that I am very happy that our administration considers student safety above everything else when making a decision to close school. Today at the work session, I said, "It's very easy to replace days and hours, but you cannot replace students." And with that being said, does anybody else have anything?
Just commendation to Mrs. Osman and Mrs. Kinsel and the dispatch staff that they've done an excellent job, and they were out and about at three and four in the morning, so checking on things.
Okay. And there was a presentation earlier about what goes into determining whether to close school, and we have a bus that's on the road at, what, four-thirty in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
The Corolla bus, so.
Right, so she said that if we did a three-hour delay, am I right, Ms. Osman, that that bus leaves the beach, Corolla, at seven-thirty AM? So, that's why these decisions have to be made much earlier than what you expect them to.
Right, okay. Anybody else? Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item, Driver Education Resolution. Last year, the legislature, well, in their infinite wisdom, provided us with another unfunded mandate, and that dealt with drivers' education. Drivers' education had historically been paid for out of the Highway Trust Fund, and beginning July, there are no Highway Trust Funds going to fund drivers' education, which is going to put the burden back on the school district and the parents of students who will go through drivers' education. And I would like to the Board of Education to consider a resolution opposing this unfunded mandate. And I will now read the resolution. Whereas local school districts in North Carolina are legally required to provide and operate driver education courses, and whereas costs for operating driver education courses have historically been covered and earmarked by appropriations from the Highway Trust Fund, and whereas driver education is a key component of the Graduated Driver's License Program, which has effectively helped reduce teen motor vehicle accidents and fatalities, and whereas the two thousand fourteen state budget moved all Highway Trust Fund appropriations for the drivers' education program to non-recurring for two thousand fourteen-fifteen and stated it was a state's intent to eliminate the funding in its entirety beginning July first, two thousand fifteen. And whereas, school districts have the authority to charge fees to drivers' education participant, but the fee is capped at sixty-five dollars per student, while the estimated operational cost per student is estimated to be between a hundred and seventy and three hundred and fifty dollars. And whereas, if the state follows through on the elimination of funding for the drivers' education program, it would impose yet another unfunded mandate on local school systems, who would have to find a way to cover the substantial gap between the allowable maximum fee and the, that can be charged in the actual cost of operating this required program. And whereas, an unfunded driver education program mandate would force school districts to either take drastic cuts to instructional services, which would harm students in the classroom, or cut back access to the drivers' education program through reduced services, which would cause some students to be denied the invaluable and successful training of the graduated licensing program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Education strongly objects to an unfunded driver education mandate, and therefore be it further resolved that the Currituck County Board of Education respectfully requests that the General Assembly revisits its decision to sunset driver education program funding on July first, two thousand fifteen, and either restore the full Highway Trust Fund allocation or establish another funding source that does not cut into the other educational allotments. Adopted by the Board of Education, this, well, today is not the fifth day of March. Today is, what, the seventh? Eighth? Ninth?
Nine. Moving right along.
This ninth day of March, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion for approval?
I motion that we approve that.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I don't know where the state thinks that a parent who has two kids in the same grade level, or three children in the same grade level, could come up with enough money to pay for driver's ed at one time. It could be as much as a thousand dollars, the parents would have to come up to pay for their children to have driver's ed, which driver's ed has been a privilege in this county since I can remember. And for the state to come up now and say, "You got to pay for it," it's just, you know, this is tough times.
They were, this is showing my age, but they were giving driver's ed in Currituck when I was in school, so, yeah. I don't even want to go there.
And the parents did not have to pay for it. But, yeah, to take this away from the kids in our county, and for the parents to have to come up with that kind of money is just crazy.
Yeah.
I agree.
Another mandate that's not funded.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
If they move.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Public Comment Session. The Public Comment Session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in order which they sign up, and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. When called, please state your name and address. Okay, we have one person signed up, Sandra Holcomb. Once again, please state your name and address.
My name is Sandra Holcomb, and I live at two thirty-two Beechwood Shores Drive.
Okay. Go ahead.
First off, I sincerely want to thank you for taking on the responsibility to make some tough decisions that you've had to make this past February in light of how many snow days we have had. It is a responsibility I personally would never have wanted, so I do sincerely appreciate that. However, in light of the number of snow days and the two-hour fog delays our county has faced in February alone, I feel that it is time to start exploring creative solutions to the increasing amount of downtime our students have and will probably continue to have. First off, bus safety on foggy mornings. First of all, we need to remember that buses are extremely safe modes of transportation. Statistically speaking, our children are three times more likely to be struck by lightning and just as likely to be attacked by a shark as they are to die on a school bus. However, nine thousand children nationwide die each year from household accidents. Research has shown that when kids are left at home alone, they are at a greater risk of accident and harm. In addition, two kids die each day from drowning. Just this January, in North Carolina, a child fell through the ice and drowned. In a county surrounded by water, this must be taken into consideration whenever we cancel school or we delay school. In addition to that, another consideration is that approximately seventy-five families nationwide include two working parents or one single working parent. Of this number, forty-eight percent fear that family responsibilities could get them fired. In today's economic climate, when the bus is delayed two hours twice in one week, it forces parents to leave young children at home. Based on statistics, this could prove much more dangerous than a bus ride in the fog. This led me to researching what different school districts in the most foggy areas of our country do to combat this problem while still choosing the safest options for their children. First off, it was hard to find any who actually delayed school. However, in Bakersfield, California, during what they consider fog season, they will delay school for two hours. However, they give their working parents the option to drop off their children at the regular time. In our county, this could be used for EOG review and practice. Even if my child only spent the morning in a supervised gym dancing to What Does the Fox Say, I feel that that would be a much more productive time for my child than watching his parents freak out over who is going to be late for work once again. I have also heard that our county is long and the fog doesn't always obey the Weather Channel's instructions and stay off the ground, so they're in the fog anyway. In the attempt to exercise an abundance of caution, I suggest we follow Central Texas's example and add fog lights to the front of the bus, which would increase the driver's visibility, and an extra strobe light to the front top of the bus, which would decrease visibility of cars coming, and also, we could add fog lights to the back of the bus, which would also increase the bus's visibility. Also, even though our drivers are properly licensed, they have not been offered specific training in dealing with the unique topography of our county. These precautions could be taken to make our buses even safer than what they are now, whether the fog follows the Weather Channel's advice or not. Okay? In addition, our kids were out of school approximately two weeks. Don't worry, I know, I'm going fast, okay? I only have a little bit more, I swear. In approximately two weeks, I feel this was a missed opportunity for reinforcement. Last year, I received a packet to complete on days when the elementary school was out. I did not receive that this year, nor have I ever received anything from the middle Every year, teachers have to do a subfolder. We could also request that they do a storm folder, all right? We're missing some really great opportunities here. I know that if you sent home EOG practice in math or reading, I would definitely do that with my child. It would not be a waste of trees. As far as the middle school students are concerned, due to decisions made beyond our county's boundaries, we now have produced a generation of students who can't sign their names, and I teach at a college, and they can't read in script, in cursive, what the professors are saying. This would be a prime example to fill in those gaps in our curriculum and offer those students some practice.
Could you just-
Yes.
-send your concerns to us because you're about twice over your limit of time-
Okay.
-that we ask you-
I just wanted to say-
Because we will consider-
Oh, I know.
-you know, if you put them in writing and send them to us.
I just wanted to speak for the parents today. This is the last thing I'm going to say. In summation, the inevitability of, you know, global warming with increased inclement weather in an economy where jobs are now precious, and in a school system where school test scores are declining, we need to work as a community and find solutions for this rather than just allowing a bunch of downtime. Okay?
Thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
And please do send your suggestions.
I will, I'll write you down a letter.
Next, information items. The Board of Education tonight will meet with the county commissioners at six o'clock at the Extension Center. Our next work session will be April second at the NAP Professional Learning Center at four, and our next Board of Ed meeting will be April second, right here at the Historic Courthouse at six-thirty. Now, Board Member Comments. Ms. Kraft?
Yes. I, because of inclement weather, have not been able to visit all the schools this month, but I did get to the Jarvisburg Elementary School Wax Museum, which was wonderful as usual, and I was a guest reader in Ms. Wilson's classroom at Mayock Elementary School, Read Across America, and I visited Currituck County High School this morning for just a short time. I want to share something with you on the closing, the school closing dilemma. It's a quote from Paul Parrott's. "The school closing dilemma: You are a superintendent who has been notified that the National Weather Service is predicting snow or ice and possibly dangerous driving conditions. You are aware that thousands of schoolchildren will be riding buses and hundreds of teenagers driving. You are also aware that if nothing happens, you will be lambasted and mocked by parents and taxpayers. What do you do? Do you say, 'I'll believe it when I see it,' or do you cancel classes? I can't speak for you, but I would rather be a fool fifty times than be fatally wrong once." And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Ms. Gattis?
I visited Shawboro Elementary, which Ms., usually double what Dwan does because she makes the effort to go to all the schools every month. But, I visited Shawboro, and I saw tons of energetic kids greeting me in the halls, enjoying their classroom, et cetera. They were learning everything from Dr. Seuss's, you know, what had happened if Thing One and Thing Two showed up at their house. They learned about explorers from all around the world. They were learning about the presidents and, you know, all kinds of things. It's just a great environment to walk into our schools and see our kids really engaged in what they're doing, and I really enjoy it. The other thing I did this month, which is taking off, and I'm really excited about it, I again attended the Currituck Ministers Council for Education. We are slowly growing. We had more churches involved this month, and we actually were able to officially form a board, so we have a chair, a vice chair, secretary and treasurer now. And I'd like to thank Pastor Vic Colberson, who is our chair, Pastor Garland Akers, who's our vice chair, Pastor Sue Slater, Suzie Slater, I'm sorry, who's our secretary, and Pastor Dawn Hollis, who is our treasurer. And we are constantly looking for any and all churches to get involved in the community who would like to adopt a school, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody that's interested. If you have a pastor out there who you think should be interested or involved, get them in touch with me or one of these people that I just listed, because we would love to have every church's involvement in Currituck County.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
I just got a couple of things. One, first off, I want to say thank you to our administration for a super job they have done at redoing this schedule. In talking to teachers and parents, they didn't want to go to school on Saturday, they didn't want to lose spring break, they didn't want to add time at the end of the year, they didn't want to add time to the day, and I just thought, "Well, there's nothing we can do." And to see what Ms. Osman and our administration has come up with, I was blown away today. I thought, "What kind of bad news am I going to have to tell people?" And if people look at what they've done to put our kids with the amount of hours and no Saturday school, no extended time, and we still get the amount of hours we need where instruction, so I would like to thank you for that. Next is the inclement weather. It's got to be the hardest job there is, and nowhere else, nowhere else do I know in this country do we have a place like Currituck County. Drive the causeway to Knott's Island on a windy day in a bus. Drive the causeway on a snowy day, windy day, in a bus. Drive the causeway going to Bell's Island. Drive that causeway going to Water Lily. Drive across the Coin Jock Bridge or the Wright Memorial Bridge, and you can see the problem we have in this county with the roads that we have. Drive our backroads. Go down East Ridge Road, where the road is in shade all day long. Go down Pointer's Road, where the sunlight hardly ever hits it, and it's a swamp and it freezes. So, what a wonderful job. It's a tough job calling, you know, early release, and I told them in our work session today, we had an early release. I can't remember what day it is. We got out of school early, we came home, and I decided, "I'm going to go to Harris Teeter and get milk and bread." Everybody gets milk and bread. Well, I went by Hickory High School that did not get out early. And when I came back by Hickory High School at like three-thirty-five, there were already three vehicles in the ditch, in the snow, and all three of those vehicles were high school students. The kids at Currituck High School were already home. You made the right decision, and I'm just so happy that we got our kids off the road, which the city of Little North Island didn't make that decision. Last but not least, I would, I cannot tell you how proud I am of our county with the one book, one district. Growing up, I was one of those kids who I hated to read. My parents actually punished me to make me read. I hated it. Now, give me a magazine with a hunting article, I loved it. But if I'd had something like this when I was in first and second and third grade, that there would be a little competition, that would be, you know, your best friends reading it, your teachers reading it, your bus drivers reading it, the janitors are reading it, and the Board of Education is reading it, I would have probably picked up on reading a whole lot earlier. People think Town Bank, Kids First, RCR Racing, which, you know, people just, all you have to do is say, "Look, we want to do something for the kids," and people in this county, people statewide, jump right in, and I'm just so proud to be part of it in this county.
Me, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last board meeting, I had the opportunity to tour the high school and was proud to see Chromebooks being used in every classroom that I looked in on. I also had the great pleasure of stopping by a teacher's classroom and tell her that I met one of her former students, and her former student said she was the best teacher he had ever had, bar none. So, you know, it was nice to tell a teacher that somebody who had graduated who didn't need to say, said that she was the best teacher ever. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
If they move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting closed.